Good evening, everyone. We're going to call the City Council meeting to order for Tuesday, February 18th, 2025. At this time, we'd like to begin with prayer. If we can ask Reverend Scott Henley from Asbury United Methodist Church to lead us, please.
Just to share a word, when I received this incredible letter from our esteemed Stacy inviting me to do this, I began praying for you and thinking about all that you guys have, men and women, all you folk have to do. The church where I've been blessed to serve has a, hosts a food pantry that feeds 250 families a week. And there's people in our community who wonder whether or not it's okay to be able to get out and about because of things going on. And we're trying to figure out how to keep them in food. All of that comes to you eventually. The changes that we're going to see are going to come down to you leaders who are here because you are impassioned and are called and have been invited and elected to serve, to make a difference, to allow this community to be safe. For if, who knows what's going to happen to children's breakfasts and lunches, right? Right? Eventually, it might come down to all the folks here to have to deal with. And so I've been praying for you. I've been praying for you because it comes to here. And you have this incredible opportunity that has been given to you to watch for our care. And I thank you for that. So God, Creator of the heavens and the earth, the one who made those stars in the sky that twinkle so bright in the evening and are such a beautiful sight to see when we can get far enough away from the city lights to be able to just enjoy them and the cloud cover is just right. The one who created us in such a variety of ways, Lord God, we give you thanks for your creativity. And who have called us to be able to care for a community that we call home, to care for the people who live as our neighbors, to share love and to watch out for them and watch their backs and to make sure that people are safe and that the food that we have is safe and the water that we drink is safe and that the fires are put out and that the things are done and that our children are watched over and, and fed when they need to be and, and that the veterans have places to go and our seniors are cared for and everybody in between, Lord God, oh, there's so many things that these people here have on their plates. And so I pray, Lord God, as we lift them up to you, one and all, for your blessing, for that incredible spirit of promise and hope and life and energy and love and compassion and kindness to move through this body, that it might flow towards our community, that we might be, be the people that can be that beacon on a hill, shining as a way that we're going to share your love in all that we are and do. Work through these people, Lord God. Amen? And amen.
The City Council will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
Next on our item is number four, public comments. We have no sign, no one signed up for public comments tonight. We'll move on to item five, roll call.
Jones.
Present.
Noble.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Cobb's.
Here.
Lewis.
Here.
Navarez.
Marzak.
Present.
Swanson.
Here.
Tully.
Here.
Osingah.
O'Brien.
Here.
Baron.
Here.
Little Marshall.
Prude.
Ten present or absent.
We do have a call. Department heads.
Kidwell.
Here.
LaRoche.
Here.
Rogers.
Here.
Kubel.
Present.
Landwehr.
Present.
Sanchi.
Present.
Newton.
Here.
Pigash.
Nelson.
Here.
Beasley.
Here.
King.
Here.
Frazwell.
Brewer Watson.
Here.
Thank you.
Next is item six, is there a motion to approve the minutes from February 3rd, 2025?
Make that motion, Mayor Curtis.
We have a motion from Alderman Tully. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Alderman Marzak. Is there any questions, comments, changes, or additions to the minutes? Seeing none, roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Ten ayes, zero nays.
The minutes for February 3rd, 2025 are approved. There are no petitions tonight. We'll move on to item eight, communications. Item eight, is it the councils, would they like to combine items A, B, C, and D?
So moved.
And a motion to combine items eight, A, B, C, and D by Alderman O'Brien. Is there a second?
I'll second him, Mayor.
We have a second from Alderman Cobb's. Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Ten ayes, zero nays.
The motion to combine is approved. Clerk, would you read items eight, A, B, C, and D for the record?
Yep. Item A, Bishop McNamara Catholic Schools requesting permission to host their Fighting Irish 5K Ken Clip Classic on Monday, May 26th, 2025, from 7:00 a.m. until 10:30 a.m. Item B, the South Chicago Wheelman have submitted a revised request to host their Cobb Park Criterion on Sunday, June 8th, 2025, from 9:00 a.m. until 5:00 p.m. Item C, Merchant Street Art Gallery of artists with autism is requesting permission to host their Run for Autism on Sunday, June 15th, 2025, from 7:30 a.m. until 10:30 a.m. And item D, the Will Grundy Counties Building and Construction Trades Council and Kankakee, Iroquois Counties Building Trades of the AFL-CIO are requesting permission to host their Dad's Day Tag Day on Saturday, June 14th, 2025.
Is there a motion to approve the communications?
So moved.
We have a motion from Alderman O'Brien. Is there a second?
I'll second him, Mayor.
We have a second from Alderman Cobb's. Any questions or comments regarding items eight, A, B, C, or D? Seeing none, roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Ten ayes, zero nays.
Communications are approved. Move on to item nine, standing committees. Item nine A.
Budget for Monday, January 13th, 2025.
Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you, Mayor. The budget committee met on Monday, the 13th of January. We reviewed financial statements through the month of December, which was the two-thirds way through the fiscal year. Comptroller Rogers reviewed the financial statements, highlighting a few things. First, that salaries and general expenses in general are on track with the budget. She did note that in particular, police overtime is under budget for the year, as is fire administration to the year-to-date through the budget and is on target to come in under budget. The comptroller also reviewed the additional expenses and cash balances, noting that the pension obligation bonds have started to be invested with the downstate fire and police pension funds. At that point, the next investment would occur on January 22nd, 2025, so that's happened by now. And the comptroller reported that the local fire pension boards are also aware of that schedule and satisfied that those investments would be made. And there were no additional conversations or questions, and we adjourned at approximately 5:54 p.m. that night.
Thank you, Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you.
Next is item nine B.
Community Development for Monday, February 3rd, 2025.
Alderman Baron?
Thank you, Mayor. The Community Development Committee met two weeks ago yesterday, on February 3rd. Elder woman Swanson called the meeting to order. We discussed the ECDA departmental report. ECDA has set a goal of five housing rehab projects to be completed each month at this point. January, due to a few things, we're not able to make that goal, but we expect to make it in February. At this time, ECDA has 32 housing rehab projects in process. And then after that, there are 95 individuals on the Lead Hazard Grant applicant waitlist and 235 households on the non-led applicant waitlist. We do expect to receive drawdown requests for our CDBG Public Service Program for the 24-25 year in the next three months. Nine different organizations have applied for CDBG Public Service Program funds for the following year. This upcoming year, we expect to have about $50,000 available for homeless services and $30,000 available for other services. At this point, nine different organizations have applied for much more than the amount that we have available to allocate, so that will be a competitive process. As you know, you provided potential applicant, or appointees for the Community Advisory Board who will be making the recommendations as to the public service program amounts before they come to the full council. Also discussed, the United Day Way of Action, United Way Day of Action, which will be on Tuesday, April 22nd. You should have got an email from Director Brewer Watson asking for the ideas that you'll have in each of your wards for a project. If you could get ECDA your project soon, that would be good because we do have to get marketing and volunteers set up for that. I did show up at some point during this meeting, and then I took over as chair. Ms. Brewer Watson provided an update as to the impact of pronouncements from the Office of Management and Budget as to federal assistance and grants, provided a timeline. On January 28th, there was a memo issued directing a freeze of all funding pending review. At that point, ECDA was locked out of their HUD accounts. Eventually, those accounts were reopened after the memorandum issued by OMB was restored. But Ms. Brewer Watson did report about the impact that could occur if those funds are delayed in being able to be provided. Most of the ECDA's housing rehab and community development work is funded through federal grants, including seven of the nine employees. ECDA has been in discussions with Senator Duckworth's office, who has been helpful in determining what programs are going to be affected, what aren't. Thankfully, most of the grant agreements we have are for, have agreements that were signed some, quite some time ago, so there is a vested interest that the city has with those. We reported on the upcoming demolition of five parcels on the 400 block of North Fifth Avenue. That's another item that comes from CDBG funds that are made available. We also went through the department's five-year consolidated plan for CDBG funds. This involves compiling all the information that is gathered from various public meetings, from constituents about what the needs are for the use of our CDBG funds. The priorities that were identified, and we'll go through them a little bit tonight, that is on the agenda, but they include housing counseling, down payment assistance, fair housing, housing rehab, supportive services for persons experiencing homelessness, community infrastructure, employment opportunities, and administration of those programs. We then adjourned at 6:40 p.m.
Thank you, Alderman Baron. Next, we'll move on to item 10, Report of Officers. Item 10 A.
City of Kankakee Bills in the amount of $1,295,514.15.
Is there a motion to approve the Report of Officers for the City of Kankakee?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion from Alderman Marzak. Is there a second?
I'll second, Mayor.
We have a second from Alderman Jones. Is there any questions or comments regarding the bills for City of Kankakee? Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye, but I abstain as to check 83573 to Etchedin Time Inc., 83580 to Gross, Kreutz, Abraham, Eshelman, and Garretsey, 83586 to Kankakee Ace Hardware, 83597 to Pigash Engineering, 3866 to Kankakee Valley Construction, 3868 to Pigash Engineering, 1464 to Kankakee Ace Hardware, 1465 to Kankakee Valley Construction, and 1470 to Pigash Engineering to avoid a potential conflict.
Thank you. Ten ayes, zero nays.
Report of officers for the City of Kankakee approved. Next is item 10 B.
Environmental Services Utility Bill in the amount of $715,414.29.
Is there a motion to approve the Report of Officers for ESU?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion from Alderwoman Swanson. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Alderman Marzak. Is there any questions or comments regarding the bills for ESU?
Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye, but I abstain as to check 36043 to Baron Hewitt Oil, check 36055 to Gordon Electric Supply, 36056 to Gross, Kreutz, Abraham, Eshelman, and Garretsey, 36063 to Kankakee Ace Hardware, 36065 to Kankakee Truck Equipment, 36080 to PSI Construction to avoid a potential conflict of interest.
Thank you. Ten ayes, zero nays.
Report of officers for Environmental Services Utility are approved. Next is item 11, unfinished business. We have none tonight. We'll now move into new business, item 12. Item 12 A.
An ordinance amending Chapter 32, Section 231, entitled Handicap Parking of the Municipal Code of the City of Kankakee. Handicap parking signs established at 567 North Hamess Avenue.
Is there a motion to suspend the rules that will allow for the passage of this ordinance tonight?
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
We have a motion from Alderman Jones. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Alderwoman Noble. Is there any questions or comments? Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Ten ayes, zero nays.
Ordinance is approved. Next is item 12 B.
An ordinance repealing ordinance 2023-25, which granted a Class A liquor license to Flanagan's Irish Pub, Inc.
So the next two items have to deal with the same location. We did bring these to the License and Franchise Committee. They did recommend these forward to City Council. Flanagan's Irish Pub is now closed, and so this is repealing their license so we can have a license available for item 12 C. So we'll start with item 12 B. Is there a motion to suspend the rules that will allow for the passage of this ordinance tonight?
So moved.
We have a motion from Alderwoman Johnson. Is there a second?
Second.
I'll second him, Mayor.
We have a second from Alderman Cobb's. Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Marzak.
Abstain due to a potential conflict of interest.
Thank you. Swanson.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero nays, one abstention.
Yeah, we can't suspend the rules. Can I vote? Okay. So legal says we do have, in order to suspend the rules, we have to have at least 10, two-thirds of a vote to suspend rules, which is 10 alderpersons. But in the case, legal has said that, go ahead and explain it real quick.
Municipal Code provides for three situations where the mayor votes. One of them is if there's a supermajority requirement, as there is for this motion. It's two-thirds of the aldermen currently holding office. The others aren't important here, but the mayor can vote on this motion.
Mayor Curtis?
Aye.
Okay, we have 10 ayes, zero nays, one abstention.
Okay. So, so we did that, the rule, the motion to suspend the rules, suspend the rules for passing this ordinance are approved. Is there a motion to place this ordinance on final reading for passage tonight?
So moved.
We have a motion from Alderman Johnson. Is there a second?
I'll second him, Mayor.
We have a second from Alderman Cobb's. Is there any questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, this stays a roll call, and this takes eight votes for affirming an ordinance.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Marzak.
Abstain due to a potential conflict of interest.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero nays, one abstention.
Ordinance is approved. Next is item 12 C.
An ordinance approving a Class A liquor license at the location of 150 North Skyler in Kankakee.
Again, this was brought to the License and Franchise Committee. This is the new owner, Mr. Tap, who would be opening up a, an estate, same establishment as where Flanagan's Irish Pub was. It'll be called The Hideout. So this is a motion to approve that Class A liquor license for the same location that we just repealed. Is there a motion to suspend the rules that will allow for the passage of this tonight?
So moved.
We have a motion from Alderwoman Johnson. Is there a second?
I'll second him, Mayor.
We have a second from Alderman Cobb's. Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Marzak.
Abstain due to a potential conflict of interest.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero nays, one abstention.
Ordinance is approved. Next is item 12 D.
An ordinance approving transfer of ownership of a Class A liquor license at the location of 597 South Washington Avenue.
So this location is the Dam Tap located at Washington and River, the corner there. It's currently owned by Mr. Dustin Coy. He is selling the business to Mr. Rick Jones, so the corporation papers and everything in the business will remain the exact same. It's just a change of ownership. So we're approving the transfer of the ownership license of the Class A liquor license from, from Mr. Coy, who owns 100% of the shares of Dam Tap, to Mr. Rick Jones, who will also then continue to operate under the same corporation. Is there a motion to suspend the rules that would allow for the passage of this ordinance tonight?
So moved, Mayor.
We have a motion from Alderwoman Lewis. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
We have a second from Alderwoman Swanson. Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Marzak.
Abstain due to a potential conflict of interest.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Mayor Curtis?
Aye.
We have 10 ayes, zero nays, one abstention.
Motion to suspend the rules is approved. Is there a motion to place this ordinance on final reading for passage tonight?
So moved.
We have a motion from Alderwoman Lewis. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
We have a second from Alderwoman Swanson. Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Marzak.
Abstain due to a potential conflict of interest.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Mayor Curtis?
Aye.
10 ayes, zero nays, one abstention.
Motion to suspend the rules is approved. Motion to suspend the rules is approved. Is there a motion to place this ordinance on final reading for passage tonight?
So moved, Mayor.
We have a motion from autowoman Lewis. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
A second from autowoman Swanson. Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis. Marzak.
Aye. I'm sorry. Due to a potential conflict of interest, abstain. Sorry.
Thank you. Swanson.
Aye.
Tally.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero nays, one abstention.
Ordinance is approved. Next is item twelveE.
An ordinance authorizing an amendment to a tax increment financing agreement between the City of Kankakee and J. Jeffers and Company LLC, JD Finance LLC, and East Station Street LLC.
Before we kind of get into this a little bit, just want to give a little explanation where we're at. This has been discussed at the Economic Development Committee probably for the last three or four months, and it was finally recommended out of the committee to go to full city council. Mr. Mike Sanchi, our legal, has been working very closely with the J. Jeffers team. Mr. Brian Lofton is here tonight in attendance if there's any questions from the council as we move forward. I want to give a little background of where we're at, some of the dynamics that are happening within the county and the city of Kankakee, and then what's changing the ordinance here. So as you know, in May of twenty twenty-one, we approved an agreement with J. Jeffers to build a, the three, the redevelopment of three ten South Skyler, that's a former Midland Bank building, and to build ninety-two units of new, of new construction market rate apartments. Then in August of twenty-three, we amended that. That was a first amendment to that agreement. We changed some structuring around on that. One of the biggest things that we had changed there, there were some different things we had changed. The master guarantee lease, if you remember at that time, before it was, the city was guaranteeing up to four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in rent to the three ten South Skyler for a period of twenty years. We amended that to be a fifty-fifty split between the developer and the city of Kankakee with a cap of three hundred thousand. So the exposure to the city of Kankakee was a hundred and fifty thousand, and developer a hundred and fifty thousand for a twenty-year period. Moving fast forward to twenty twenty-four and where we're at today, there's been substantial changes to try to get this project off the ground. As you know, construction costs rose very quickly in the last three years. Supply and demand, interest rates increased dramatically, and it was difficult to get this project off the ground. In talking with Mr. Lofton and Mr. Jeffers to get this to the point we're at now, several changes were made. In particular, the renovation of three ten South Skyler will pretty much remain the same as it was all along. They're working with a tenant for that space that they would custom fit the space for. Then there would still be space on the second floor for rent and the lower level and some things there. But there was, as part of the deal is, they're renting, they're changing the market rate housing apartments. It is now going to be a forty-seven unit complex. It'll be three stories tall. It'll have a off-site parking with a decorative fence around it. It will, they've, they listened to the alderperson's comments about having a rooftop deck area to access, which is something I don't think we have anywhere in Kankakee County for any type of apartments or apartment complex. It'll have a community room on the grade level near the main entrance. The rooms or the studios, one bedrooms and two bedrooms, will be very similar, if not almost identical, to what was going to be built in the original project. And then they also worked with a lot of the aesthetics on the outside of the building. They set back some wall panels and some different things. They added some metal grating over some of the windows and did some different aesthetic finishes to give it a very modern look that we haven't seen really in the area for new construction. In this amendment, basically, there was the three things that I just talked about. There's the redesign and reconstruction of the market rate apartments. I actually think it could be a very positive move. Obviously, they're taking a big chance here to build downtown housing and new construction in a market that we haven't seen with residential for many, many, many years. To do a smaller project and have a successful smaller project, I think, is better for us in the long run, when I say us, the city of Kankakee, versus maybe building ninety-two units and maybe leasing up sixty percent of it, where we hope that they'll lease up one hundred percent of it and show the true demand of the housing that's needed in the area. The second key piece to it, why the construction cost, and I've got some numbers here. Before, I think it was roughly, and if Mr. Lofton, if I'm off on any of this, correct me if I'm, but I think it was about a twenty to twenty-two million dollar project. The total project cost now is nineteen million, three hundred thousand for this project. As you can see, it's a smaller project, but those costs haven't gone away because of the new cost and the financing that has to go along with it. It is still a ninety-ten split, and the city agrees to reimburse the developer up to three million, six hundred ninety-two, one hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. That is the incentive amount over the term of the TIF. And then we put in some hard completion dates in this amendment here. And we did it, we called it phase one completion dates, which is three ten South Skyler, and we did phase two completion dates, which is the new construction for the apartments. They'll begin with getting phase one permits by May fifteenth. They will need to go through the zoning and PUD approval because it is a new project. So they're going to have to work with Director King and the planning board to do that. We've got a date in there of no later than June sixteenth to obtain that, those zoning requirements. And then permits would be issued by the city of Kankakee no later than July fifteenth. With phase one's substantially completed construction, hopefully no later than March fifteenth of twenty twenty-six, about a year from now. Those are some outside dates. They may potentially be able to beat those dates ahead of time. But there's a key piece, I'll go through phase two project, and that is plans will be submitted for phase two, the new market construction, no later than August fifteenth. Permits would be issued no later than October fifteenth by the city, and construction of the project be completed by December thirty-first of twenty twenty-six. The one piece that we did put in here, they do need the Rivers Edge Incentive Zone District in order to make this happen. Without that district, they can't make this work financially. We still have to get that certified from the state level. We believe that there's a really good chance we could have it certified. Our goal, what the Barbies, we're kind of hoping by Memorial Day weekend, but we really believe we can get it done by July first. We don't think that'll be a problem. But if for some reason it does not get certified by the state of Illinois by the date that they need, and we set that date in there of what that first project is, is basically July fifteenth, there is a day-for-day match of extension on these dates for how long it takes to get the state to certify it. So an example would be if the state didn't certify it for, let's just say, August fifteenth, and that's a thirty-day delay, all these dates on here would get backed up by thirty days. If for some reason the state didn't certify it till January first, which we don't think would be an issue because it's already been approved by the Senate and the House, then those dates would back up by, you know, that five and a half months there. So it is very critical that they have that incentive place to get this done. So that's part of the redevelopment agreement also. Probably one of the biggest things for the benefit of the city of Kankakee is the thirteen, the developers, is that master guarantee lease portion. As we mentioned before in the amendment in August of twenty twenty-three, it was reduced down to three hundred thousand on year one. It does escalate by three percent each year. Split fifty-fifty with the developers, so the maximum exposure to the city of Kankakee in year one was a hundred and fifty thousand over a twenty-year, a hundred and fifty thousand in year one, and then three percent increases over a twenty-year period. They have reduced that twenty-year guarantee down to seven years. That's actually a very, probably a really big win for the city of Kankakee. So it's still at the three hundred thousand. It's still a fifty-fifty split between the developer and the city, but it is now a seven-year exposure versus a twenty-year exposure. So that is, that was a real big win for the city of Kankakee there to help and protect us financially for the future. Those are basically the majority of what those amendments are there. I'm going to turn to Mr. Sanchi really quick. Is there any big item I'm missing there?
Settlement on the loan. Settlement agreement on the loan.
Yeah, if you, yeah.
Yeah, there's one other piece to this. When the original TIF agreement with the Jeffers Group was signed in June of twenty twenty-one, the city had agreed to make a million-dollar loan and support of the project. That loan was made in November sixteenth of twenty twenty-one. To date, they haven't paid anything on it. And when the replacement agreement was approved in August of last year, it didn't really address that. It did say that the city had agreed that if they completed everything on time, that the city would forgive that loan as additional incentive. Because they're coming back a second time asking for additional time for more dates, felt it was important to really nail that down, make sure everyone understood where things stood on the loan agreement. There's a settlement agreement in here that has them acknowledging that they owe the money, that they haven't paid anything, that they're in default, and it says that the city agrees to release that liability, get rid of the mortgage, and forgive the loan if they follow all of the completion dates that are in this agreement. And if they don't, they're immediately liable to the city for the full amount plus interest. So.
And I had a thought in my head there. I'm sorry. Was it in the, if you talked about, we had an economic development, we talked about, about the subordination of that million-dollar loan into a bridge loan and some other things. They are, the original, the second amendment said we'd subordinate once they borrow the construction loan for the full project and, you know, seeking their permanent financing, and it's still that way here. So they are not, we will not be subordinating that position until they borrow the full construction loan for phase one and phase two of that project.
Subordination requirement was in the original loan agreement.
So any bank, when you do go to get, you know, fifteen, eighteen, nineteen million dollars, they're going to ask you to subordinate your position in a second, and that's very common, but it won't happen until that happens. But that was part of the original, or the second, first amendment in August of twenty-three. So we did cover that, that we talked about at economic development also. Just to say that it's, it's obviously been a long road here. We're still, I think, in talking to council, and I can at least speak from the administration standpoint, we're still very excited to have downtown housing. We believe it is one of the key changes for the community, to have that in downtown, to be able to prop up our developments, our retailers, our establishments that are located in that downtown area, to have, you know, hopefully a hundred people that are living full-time downtown that might want something at eight o'clock on a Saturday night or two o'clock on a Sunday afternoon and not have to count on the business crowd that may not be downtown in the off-hours. And then really, there's, there's a demand for housing, not only in the city of Kankakee, but in the county of Kankakee. There's some facts and figures I have here from the Kankakee Economic Alliance that presented last Thursday and from KiFAR, the Kankakee Iroquois Ford and Association of Realtors. Couple interesting things. Obviously, housing is getting more and more expensive all the time, good quality housing, and finding it is difficult, and that's part of the reason that you're seeing rents that are driving up. The average rental cost in twenty twenty-four for a rental unit is one thousand, three hundred ninety-nine dollars in Kankakee County. Now, that's just not city of Kankakee, that's countywide. Five years ago, it was nine hundred and fifty-two dollars. It's an increase of forty-six percent in the last five years. What we're also had happen is the alliance had just done a updated housing market analysis by Tracy Cross and Associates, and this was just delivered last week. So it's dated February twenty twenty-five. Their, their update in their housing analysis was there's a significant need for residential development in Kankakee County over the next five years. Right now, they're saying, and this is just a housing unit, if it's a single house, single-family house, that's a housing unit. If it's a duplex, that's two housing units. If it's an eight-plex, that's, or an eight-unit apartment, that's eight housing units. They're showing a demand that there is through twenty thirty, a demand for two thousand, two hundred and fifty housing units in Kankakee County. That means they're saying for sale of homes available for sale, whether it be single-family detached, townhome, duplex or condos, there's a need for two hundred and thirty-five per year over the next five years. If you look at the housing permits in Kankakee County, and I'm not even taking city of Kankakee, just Kankakee County, since two thousand, since the bubble, since two thousand nine, there's only been four years since two thousand nine, over one hundred permits have been issued for new housing in Kankakee County. That's it. Last year was, in twenty twenty-four, was way less than a hundred. It was, looked like it was about eighty. In twenty twenty-three, it was even less. There was a time from two thousand through two thousand seven, Kankakee County housing was the lowest number, was two hundred and seventy-five. They were building homes anywhere from two hundred and seventy-five to over six hundred a year in Kankakee County. And so that's what's driven up those rents, that's driven up the housing demand. And if you get back to the rental piece of this, for rent, this study shows that in Kankakee County, there is a need for two hundred and fifteen rental units per year over the next five years because of that kind of demand for quality housing right now in the city of Kankakee. So tonight, we're talking about the downtown housing that we have been talking about for several years with J. Jeffers and Mr. Lofton. And we've got some other projects. I think you're going to hear about another project that we talked about, economic development, on March third with some duplex construction, and we're working with another developer that's looking at doing single-family housing construction. We expect all that will happen in the next sixty days before you at city council. There's a demand, and it, I'm, I'm excited that maybe the city of Kankakee can help lead that demand with different types of housing that we haven't seen here in the city of Kankakee for twenty to twenty-five years. So that's a long spiel that I wanted to share with everybody, but I think it's very important because the public's asking, what's the next step for this project? Is this project going to happen? I think we have, in talking with Mr. Lofton and Mr. Jeffers, we have a win-win situation here. They got some of the things that they needed. They're ready and fairly confident that they can proceed forward with this and have this completed by the end of next year. And as a city, we've got some hard dates that we wanted, some protections we wanted in there, and also with the master guarantee, I think it's a win for us on our end of protecting the taxpayers' money moving forward. So. With all that, and there may be some questions, we're now at, I've lost my agenda here. You did read that correctly.
Yep.
It's been so long, I forgot.
Yep.
Is there a motion to suspend the rules for the passage of this ordinance tonight?
So moved.
We have a motion from autowoman Baron. Is there a second?
I'll second it, Mayor.
We have a second from autowoman Cobb's. Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tally.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Ten ayes, zero nays.
Is there a motion to place this ordinance on final reading for passage tonight?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion from autowoman Baron. Is there a second?
I'll second it, Mayor.
We have a second from autowoman Cobb's. Is there any questions or comments that we can, that we have tonight for this ordinance? Autowoman Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. I was just listening to everything that went across the table. It's a big investment for the city, you know, and one thing that I want from, I believe, is here.
Yes, Mr. Lofton is here.
Mr. Lofton, yes, sir. Because we're putting, you know, we got a lot we putting on the table. I was going to ask a couple of questions, though, because me doing rough math over seven years, like we said, we guaranteed one fifty, seven years, plus three percent, three point nine, three point six, and rough, rough math, we'll be looking at probably, that'll take us to a million, that's a million of forgiving the loan. So, you know, we got a lot of skin in the game, and I just want to make sure that we're going, you know, that this is going to go and it's going to be here. And I truly want to see a reflection of the diversity in the city. I don't care what's going on in DC, we're in Kankakee. And autowoman Jones wants to see, with that kind of investment, I will hope that when I come down and we see it, that, you know, we're, we are a diverse city, and I expect with the dollars that we're all putting out, that diversity would be part of what you would expect, you know, from your company. Because, you know, our constituents are, we're footing the bill. We're going to foot the bill, and we want to see you do well. All right? There's a lot of investors that wouldn't come here. You came here, you're with us, we're with you. But at the same time, we want to see, you know, the reflection of our city here, and I believe that we can do it. You know, I always would tell her about, I'm not looking for no fifty-fifty and all that. I'm just saying let's be fair about what we're doing and how we're all invested, because this, it is a need. It is a need that we have in there, but I think we all have skin in the game collectively as a community. You know, we want to see the minority, we want to see the women. I want to see it all, you know, and it's fair because everybody paying the bill. There is nobody, this, this is not my money, the autowoman money, this is the city money that we're putting up, all right? And we're, whether I'm here in four years or whatever, this has still got to be. We got a seven-year deal that we're holding to, and plus twenty-year on that TIF. And, you know, I believe that's, that's, they're here twenty years.
Goes out to twenty forty-two, yes.
Something I heard about, okay, so, you know, we want you to be successful, but I want to be, I want to be real candid with you, that's all, and I'm not, I'm not being funny because, you know, it's one thing about it. Business is business, and there are also going to be, other people are going to be coming and want to do business. This is a huge company we're putting out. We're hoping that you do well, because if you win, we win, you know? But I just want to make sure, you know, what's your plans and everything that you're trying to do? Is that a part of it? And you may not have the answer tonight, and maybe you can come back to me later on to the council and let us know.
Yeah, I think I can answer, I think I can answer that, because it is, it's definitely been a part of our process for the last four years and with the previous mayor as we've, as we've moved into this process. So even the design of what's going in in three ten Skyler and the creation of job opportunities and launching a business and incubators and different pieces that work with that, and some of the funding that's already been received from Kaufman Foundation and others, it is a reflection of the community. So the actual need and end use of that from the three ten Skyler bill and the Midlands Building is by definition a piece with that. And that's the part you guys are actively participating in the hundred and fifty thousand with. In terms of the housing, it's market rate, it's there, and it's going to be available upon, you know, application. Hopefully, that means we'll get very strong pre-leasing from a variety of folks, and we would expect that it would, you know, would match with that. In terms of the bidding process with construction, it always goes out with the bidding and the process for that to come through. There are no current requirements from having to meet a mandatory piece, but, but certainly we try to do that, and, you know, some trades, it's a little easier to do than others. we try to do that, and, you know, some trades, it's a little easier to do than others with that, but certainly everyone will give it the opportunity to bid on that.
And, you know, and I know that's one thing that we can even talk to them about, at least make the conversation with them, you know, if it's not in the paperwork, I already understand how that is, if it's not in the paperwork, it's not a requirement. However, you know, you can still.
Yeah, so I'm saying that with you too, so it's the same, even when it's in the paperwork, even now the state has that together, and this is not our only project in Illinois, then it almost certainly becomes a waiver on larger projects, because it's just hard to get to that number. So, but we are committed to do that, working together with trades and doing that, which also at times can be a challenge in the trades of having minority representation, right? So, we're familiar with that, and we're certainly committed to that, not just here, but just in general, and the projects we're a part of.
All right.
It's a good question, I appreciate it.
Alderman Baron.
Thank you, Mayor, I did wanna just add my support for this project, and especially in terms of the changes we're making here. This is a scaled-down version of what we had discussed initially, however, we are also scaling back the incentive that we're making available. As the mayor mentioned, going from the 20-year master guarantee to a seven-year master guarantee is a substantial reduction of risk for us at the city, and, correct me if I'm reading this incorrectly, but we're reducing the amount of eligible reimbursement from 16.8 million to 3.7 million.
That's correct.
That's a substantial reduction of what we're making available from increment, and again, increment is money that we don't have, it's money that's generated based upon this new development that is going forward. But that amount is being scaled back quite a bit, just to reflect that this is a different project, but it's not as much as we were initially discussing. We're keeping good stewardship of our funds, especially with the $1 million pre-development loan, we're not subordinating that at this point to any sort of bridge loan, so that is going forward. It is a requirement of the contract, Alderman Jones, that the developer does make reasonable efforts towards certain levels of minority women, local-owned businesses, that's part of the contract, and that's something that we make sure is part of every contract. But, so that's, we are, I did mention, we are scaling back from some of the incentives, but I think when you look at this project, there is not housing like this anywhere in the city, anywhere in the county, anywhere in the region. This is something totally different in terms of high-density, relatively high-density downtown housing, close in proximity to all the things that we've invested in up to this point, it's walkable, it's bikeable, it is something that is new and really can take this city and this region to the next level. So, I do stand in support of that. You know, and the other thing too, is we have a number of deadlines here, we'll know pretty soon if this is gonna go forward or not, and that's something that we've made clear in the agreements at this point. So, I think it's a reasonable amendment, and I fully support it at this point.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Marzak.
I'm gonna abstain due to having property in the TIF.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tolly.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
10 ayes, 0 nays, 1 abstention.
This is approved.
That's the ordinance for those.
That's the ordinance.
I need you abstain to avoid a potential conflict.
802.
Yes.
Thank you.
8 ayes, 0 nays.
802 ordinance still is approved, and congratulations, Mr. Jeffers, we're looking forward to the next step, so, thank you, of Jeffers, Mr. Lofton, sorry about that. Next, I know agenda is item 12F, appointments, we have none tonight, we'll move on to item 13, motions and resolutions, item 13A.
Resolution waiving competitive bidding and awarding the 2025 Juneteenth and Independence Day firework contracts to Mayand Inc.
So, it's zero degrees outside, and we're gonna talk about fireworks. But this is one of the things that I thank David, my assistant, it's still hard as ever to get fireworks, so he was working on this for the last 30 days, this is the same company that we've used for the last three years now, I believe, three years. The Independence Day will be on July 4th, the cost is, actually, we're very happy, if you remember, they went up last year, they're identical to last year's cost, they did hold it, and even though there was quite the demand that, we need to get this done by March 1st, if we didn't approve these dates, there was several other municipalities and communities that would have swiped them up in a heartbeat to do on 4th of July, so, so we're asking for a motion to accept this resolution for the fireworks for Juneteenth and for 4th of July.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, so we have a motion from Alderman Swanson, is there a second?
I'll second. I'll second him, Mayor.
We have a second from Alderman Cobb's. Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Abstain.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tolly.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
10 ayes, 0 nays, 1 abstention.
Resolution is approved. Next is item 13B.
A resolution authorizing the acceptance of the Houlihan Heating and Sheet Metal Inc. bid for the Kankakee Administration building HVAC upgrades.
We did talk about this at the ESU committee prior to this one, they recommended it to City Council.
I'm sorry, you need to vote on the last one. The waiver requires a two-thirds supermajority.
Oh.
You've got nine, you need to.
Okay, I'm gonna, if you wanna go ahead and explain that real quick, we're gonna go back to item 13A.
I'm sorry, I was a little slow on the uptake. Because this has a waiver of competitive bidding, it requires a two-thirds supermajority vote, nine votes isn't enough for that, you need 10, and this is that same situation we had earlier, where the mayor can vote on it.
Mayor Curtis.
Aye.
10 ayes, 0 nays, 1 abstention.
Okay, we have fireworks. I joke often, fireworks and snow removal are two things that can get a community really worked up, so.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll go back to item 13B, it was read into by clerk, this, as I mentioned, was talked about at the ESU committee meeting before this one, they recommended to full City Council for approval. This is, if you remember, we had some time before, we had some emergency work that we thought had to be done for the heating, that heating situation has been taken care of, but there still is the air conditioning, the condenser units outside need to be replaced, there is an HVAC unit that does heat and air on the second floor in the hallway there that is in non-working order, and what the biggest thing is it, Zach, it lines it Pelican system, lines it up?
Yeah, that's correct, it would be the same kind of Pelican control system that we have in this building here.
Which allows a couple different things, that'll put the thermostats in each of the different offices within the city admin buildings, while that may not seem like a big deal, it's a huge deal for the men and ladies that work there on a daily basis. You have some that are in quarters where the sun shines in, and it can get very hot in the offices, where somebody doesn't get any sun and they're cold, this allows them to be able to adjust their temperature regions. Also, if there's a problem within the system, the whole building doesn't have to be shut down all at once, you can just shut down some certain zones while you fix it, so. We had a bid come in, and the total amount on that bid for the main work that we had was $83,750. We did ask for an alternate, and that was the dehumidifier system for the lower level of the building. Right now, they're using just the regular conventional dehumidifiers that you would use in your house, those fill up multiple times a day, so that bid was $22,520. That gives us a total of $106,270 for the entire work of the building, we believe what we had budgeted for that with ESU capital in this year's budget, and actually is below the estimated number that we had busted, reserved kind of 125 to 130,000, so we can get the optional in there and still be well below budget, and have the finances paid just out of capital. The goal is to get this work done before the hot weather sets in, so. So, we're looking for a motion to approve the resolution to accept the bid from Houlihan Heating and Sheet Metal for the HVAC upgrades at the admin building.
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
We have a motion from Alderman Tolly, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Jones, did I hear that correctly?
Yes.
Second from Alderman Jones, any questions or comments? Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tolly.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
10 ayes, 0 nays.
Resolution is approved. Next is item 13C.
Resolution authorizing the acceptance and execution of the Tyler Technologies software as a service agreement and statement of work document for a comprehensive software program for the city of Kankakee in the amount of $427,093.
So, feel like we have a lot of talking tonight, this is, $350,000 of this is being paid from the ARPA funding that we had allocated a couple years ago, after reviewing, I think at one point, we had six or seven companies that had presented for this, we'd narrowed it down to three, took some time, and then we ultimately picked Tyler Technologies, they're kind of the Cadillac of all the software that was presented. This really is going to work across all departments within the city of Kankakee. This is a three-year contract along with the installation to do this, but this is going to be to start off as, really with the code department, and then it really morphed into making sure that we're communicating and stabilizing all the departments and talking to one another. So, this is gonna work with adjudication, Department of Public Works, fire prevention, the clerk's office, the comptroller's office, the planning department, and several more, sewer department, everything along there. This will be a software that'll be available for you as Alderman, on your, part of the reasons we got the surface pros for you a year ago. You will, once this software is up and working, and it's going to take 10 to 12 months to get this working, it's a very intensive software that's gonna take a lot of work on the department heads to get it up and running, but if you have a question about code, maybe some, one of your neighbors or one of your constituents asks you, what's happening with that particular house, or that particular lot, you should be able to pull up on there, look it up immediately, it could be 3 o'clock on a Saturday afternoon, and be able to find out, has a ticket been issued, if a ticket's been issued, when is the compliance or the due date that it needs to be taken care of, all that information will be at your fingertips. What it's really going to allow also is with the department heads here, is they're gonna be able to speak to each other, right now, we're doing it old-school with paper. If we have a building permit that's coming out, we're hoping, right now, we're having everybody initial off and sign to make sure that the site plan is done, the zoning is correct, the sewer has been inspected, the code permit's been there, on and on, the sprinkler system if it's needed, or whatever the fire prevention needs, and we're doing that. This will now be, a building permit cannot be issued until everybody checks off on these boxes, everybody will be able to see what everybody's doing and talking to each other, the communication will help tremendously considering that we have several different buildings, we have planning and ECDA over in one location, we have code in another location, we have the admin in another location, they'll be able to talk. The other key thing that's gonna be really good for is the public, whether they're dealing with the clerk's office and having to get licenses, whether they're having to deal with code department and get their permits for putting up a fence, or getting a rental license, or getting a permit for the new project with Jay Jeffers that we talked about, whether they're dealing with ECDA in some of the works and the rehabs that they're doing within their programs. The public will now be able to get on the computer, it will kind of force them to get to where they need to get to, much simpler. It'll ask them, you wanna do a fence, where are you looking to put the fence, backyard, front yard? If you put front yard, it's gonna stop you immediately and say, you're gonna need to get a conditional use permit from the planning department, it's gonna route it that way. They're gonna say backyard, okay, that's allowed, what type of fence, how high is it, wood, PVC, it's allowed, all this, it'll get them all the way to need to get to to maybe just be able to get that permit very easily online at some point, and working with the comptroller's office, ultimately, we'd like to be able to even accept payments over line through credit cards and things of that nature, instead of not having to come into the code department and hand-deliver our check, and be able to apply for everything from your desk. It's, as I said, it's gonna be very intensive, but I think we're going to, I compare this to City Manager Kubo, in the past, when they had to deal, when she was in the comptroller's office in the pay corps system, you don't deal with that much, but when they had to start working through that system, I don't think there was really a happy employee in the city of Kankakee that had to deal with it, including the comptroller's office. But now, no one thinks any different of it, six years later. It's just, it's routine, and it's much more efficient, and the comptroller's office, when they need to run reports, or they need to work on the things for audit, something that sometimes maybe it'll take them eight hours, they can pump out in two to three hours and get reports, so, we hope this is going to do that. This has been initiative that I was hoping to do a couple years ago, it just took a lot of work to get to this stage here today, and we're very excited that, while it's a big number, we went with what we thought was the best of the best, and gonna be the best thing for the community, and the best thing for the city for communication, and just standardization of getting everything going with the code department and all our other departments. So, another long explanation, but before you, we have a resolution to approve the acceptance of the contract, that is for the installation of it, a three-year contract, and moving forward to get this kicked off, so that hopefully that, you know, by the end of this year, we'll have a good system in place, that'll be beneficial, not only for the city employees, but the public. Is there a motion to approve the resolution for acceptance of this?
So move, Mayor.
We have a motion from Alderman Cobb's, is there a second?
I'll second it.
We have a second from Alderman Swanson. Is there any questions or comments? If you've got them, we're open to them. Alderman Noble.
Does this amount include training for this system?
It does. That'll be one of the big pieces, includes training, some onsite training, and all that is part of it.
Okay.
That'll be one of the things that, as all the persons, we will have a time when we're gonna want you to come to some training to understand how to navigate it and get in there, because it can be really, I think it'd be, as why it's a valuable tool for this, all the departments, I think it can be extremely valuable tool for you as all the persons, to be able to answer that question at a neighborhood meeting versus, you know what, we'll get back to you on Tuesday morning, because Monday's a holiday, and everybody will be back Tuesday, and I'll get you an answer, and then you forget on Tuesday, and you call on Wednesday, and it takes a week to get back to somebody, you should be able to just look it up on your own right there. There are two different components to the software, there is admin capability where people like the code office or adjudication, or the clerk's office, they'll be able to get in and put all the data in, be able to change things, update and everything, and then there'll be read-only components, that we've, like, my office will be a read-only component, you as all the persons will be read-only, you won't be able to change any data in there, but you'll be able to access and see everything that's going on. Any other questions or comments? Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Marzak.
Are we locked it, yes?
Swanson.
Aye.
Tolly.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
10 ayes, 0 nays.
Resolution is approved. Next is item 13D.
Resolution authorizing the acceptance of the 2025 to 2029 draft consolidated plan for the Community Development Block Grant administered by the City of Kankakee Economic and Community Development Agency.
I'm gonna stop talking tonight, and I'm gonna turn this over to Director Brewer Watson. This is for, it says first reading, and to show, explain why, this is informational only tonight, we will not be voting on this, we will bring this back on March 3rd and vote, but I'll let Director Brewer Watson talk about this, why it's needed, and why it's listed as first reading tonight.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. We presented the draft for the consolidated five-year plan for our Community Development Block Grant Funds at the last Community Development Committee meeting. This is the beginning of a very lengthy public process. We have done all of last year's community conversations, collected data from all of the residents to put together the need data that HUD will ask for and how we are going to allocate these funds. And we've done the public hearing already, and now is the process to bring it forward to you so that you have plenty of time to review this five-year plan before we ask you to vote on the resolution. So to have a public document that says that you were able to receive it, first reading, and then we waited until you had some opportunity to give us comments back, if you'd like to, then we'll come back on March 3rd and vote for this, and we will have that all documented so when we submit it, they will have a good timeline of all of the public opportunities that were given to residents and elected officials to make comments. So this is before you. Key thing to note, this grant comes through Congress and has to be approved in the congressional budget, so these numbers that are in here will most likely change after Congress approves a budget, and we know what our actual annual allocation will be. The dollars that we have put into this plan are all based on the last five years of our annual allocation, so while these numbers may change, we may not actually get that information until June or July, we still have to turn this in before then. So we will make sure that the resolution, when you guys vote on it, is subject to these dollars changing when it comes to the congressional approval of the budget. So just to review, the goals are all broken down. I will send you the summary document that some of you have asked for that we presented at the Community Development Committee meeting. HUD has also had a chance to review, and there was a meeting this morning with some additional comments from them, so we'll be making adjustments from their comments as well. But the goals are housing, so affordable housing, bringing back the Housing Counseling and Down Payment Assistance Program, working on our Fair Housing Solutions with the South Suburban Housing Center, having money for our Housing Rehabilitation Program, which we call the Single Family Repair Program, and then to also help to cover some of those project delivery costs, sometimes that's a contractor, sometimes that is staff time that was spent on a specific resident project. The other goals are addressing homelessness, and we do that through our public service dollars, being able to support our local homeless agencies with their program funding, so that's that one goal that's in there. Community improvements, and so we've been doing that with clearance and demolition dollars, we'll continue that program. Helping with our public facilities, continuing to work on improving some of our fire stations and abating lead that are in some of our public facilities. And then, of course, doing public services that are not related to homelessness or housing, so things that are more about health, youth improvement, engagement, things like that. The other goal is our economic development assisting small businesses, so being able to offer some potential facade program if this is proved for our smaller businesses outside of the downtown district. So that is the biggest need that we heard on the economic development side, is not having incentives for smaller businesses, so this is built into this strategy as well. And then, of course, our admin planning and strategy portion of the grant that allows to pay for some of the ECDA salaries and benefits that go into administering this grant. So those are the overarching goals, and again, those dollars will change. I'll get the summary document to you, I know you asked me for that, and then we will be back here March 3rd asking for approval so that we can submit it per changes that we know will come when Congress approves a budget. Thank you.
Any questions for Director Brewer-Watson? And no action tonight, but it'll be back on your agenda as a resolution on March 3rd, and we'll take a vote that night. We have no need for an executive session tonight, so we'll now move on to city member comments, city member, city council member comments. Okay, seeing none? Department head comments? Director Brewer-Watson?
Thanks, Mayor. So Community Advisory Board, for those of you that I've talked to about trying to finalize things, I'm trying to get it all done by this Friday so that I can be able to present a slate of people at the Community Development Committee meeting in March. So really trying to wrap this up, so if I, if I'm reaching out to you, if I'm texting or calling, please try to get back to me as soon as possible this week so I can try to wrap this up. So there's just a few of you that I'm working with, so thank you.
Chief LaRoche?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We have applications online at the HR website for our internship program, we have some vacancies coming up. If you have, anyway, a young male or female is looking for maybe some direction, maybe what, become a firefighter or, or retail, please send them to the application on the website and they can fill out, and we'll take a look at it.
Any other city manager?
Just a reminder, I think Alderman O'Brien reminded, reminded us of this before, but on March 3rd, we will have a presentation from Lotterback and Amen regarding the pensions and this last round of funding and what that looks like from the actual analysis we did back in December for the levy, so we're gonna bring all that to fruition and wrap that up on March 3rd.
Any other comments? Okay. I just have a few. Like to thank Clara Hall and her team, as you saw when you walked in tonight, as she does each year, she does an outstanding job for Black History Month of taking the entry to the city council chambers and really just makes it very, not only is it just, it's amazing to look at, but there's just a lot of great information there, and so spend some time and look there. We also ask that you keep her in your prayers, she unfortunately suffered a small injury, and so she's gonna be out of commission for a bit while she recovers, so keep her in your thoughts and prayers with that. Also, like, we talked earlier at ESU, but I'd like to publicly acknowledge at City Council, the DPW team and the ESU team for the snow removal last week, we did talk about it at ESU and we'll continue to talk about it, they did an outstanding job, they had everything looking really good by 4 o'clock on that Wednesday, and they thought they were good, and then about an hour and a half later, snow decided to come down again and ruin everything for the night, but they worked pretty tirelessly through that and through the weekend on 24-hour shifts, and they did a great job. We talked a lot about the car ordinance earlier at the meeting before, and we'll have some discussions on that in the future. The housing, to me, I think this is an exciting thing for the city of Kankakee that we approved tonight, and there's more coming. As we mentioned earlier, March 3rd, we expect to have an agreement that Economic Development Committee's talked about for Indian Metals, and we're working with a developer for Prairie Walks south of town, those are two subdivisions that were started in 2000 and kind of felt the punch of the bubble, and they're now coming back. I said that's really, you know, there's always pieces that we need to continue going